...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'm moving the chair because this is the short one.
I, I understand what you're...
Call meeting, call meeting order, Bruce will try to not fall out of his chair.
No, that one's...
Any additions or corrections to the agenda as printed?
So I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed then.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, agenda approved. Minutes from last week's meeting.
I'm not sure if I didn't see anything, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, minutes approved. We have any general public consent.
Somebody out there, Ben?
Okay. Seeing the hearing none, we will move on to Ben with his, uh, let's put things here.
We've got a few things today, it seems like.
Yeah, it is the list.
Uh, the first item on the agenda is to approve pay voucher number nine for Marin the Bridge. This is the subfinal payment for the work that they have completed, um, this pays for the guardrail seating and mulch project. Um, I'm talking to my guys this morning, it sounds like they're gonna go and get materials, uh, start looking at building a fence on the east side.
Okay.
Apparently Dave's been talking to your brother about putting the fence in, we're gonna do that with the county staff.
Okay.
So, but this pays everything except for the three percent retainage, which we have to hang on to for a minimum of thirty days to make sure that he doesn't have any outstanding bills.
So has that put us in line with our projected cost then, Ben and Sue?
Yeah, we're actually gonna come in just a little bit under what our...
Straight under, right?
Because we used less rip rap. He was able to break up a lot of the concrete.
Great, that was from the old bridge.
From the old bridge and take the rebar out and use that concrete.
Awesome.
Very good.
I make a motion to approve pay voucher C O four six seven three for fourteen seven sixty-three forty.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, approved.
Uh, second item on the agenda is to approve slash deny Mitch made driveway request. Uh, Mitch came in, I think two Fridays ago, uh, to get a driveway extension where he's done a cleanup of an old acreage and he'd like to do a hundred footer per our county policy. In fact, it's over fifty, we have to deny it and then bring it to you guys for approval. Um, Dave looked at it, he didn't have a problem with it. I snuck up there last week, he wiped out, uh, basically there was an old grove, uh, of rotten trees and he cleaned up the acreage and buried all the trees, so he's got extra dirt out there right now. It's on top of a hill, it doesn't have...
Okay, problems.
It shouldn't be a problem.
Alright.
So there won't be a pipe through it?
There won't be a pipe through it. There's not one now, he's, he's looking at extending it.
There is an existing driveway, it's theirs, he just can make it wider.
He's just making it wider.
Okay.
Well, if you think everything looks good, I'll make the motion to approve, um, then our Mitch made driveway request.
Sorry.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, approved.
Uh, I let you guys know last week, but today is the day to, uh, that I put it on the agenda to accept the retirement of Jeff George effective September first, twenty twenty. Uh, he had worked his last day, he is using vacation time and his day and a half personal holiday to get him through September first.
Okay.
Do we have an official letter, Ben?
Uh, I believe Sue's got something signed from him.
Could she make sure that we get a copy?
Yes.
How many years has Jeff had him?
About thirty.
Thirty years.
Wow.
Just for him.
Okay, well, I'll make the motion to accept Mitch Lee Rapp's retirement of Jeff George effective September one, twenty twenty.
I'll second Sandy's motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, accepted.
The fourth item that I've got on the agenda is to approve Resolution forty twenty dash fifteen, uh, for sign replacement programs in counties. Uh, we've done this in the past, it's, it's a very good program with DOT, what they do is they will reimburse you after you've done the installation of certain signs throughout the county. They've got a list that's, that qualifies. This year, I wanna tackle some of our stop signs, so, um, because of the number of stop signs that we have, I might have to break that up in two years and do six townships this year, six townships next year.
Do the cost of the signs or the time it takes?
About twenty-five thousand for the cost, just by the signs.
Yeah.
Uh, and that doesn't include the, the time that it would take, we've got most of five hundred stop signs.
Yeah, and then when you get out there, you find a few rotten posts and they're changing them and, yeah.
So, what do you do with the old ones?
Uh, the old ones, we can, uh, send in for refacing for a cheaper fee, or else you just get scrap price for it. Um, majority of the old signs are steel signs and they won't replace the steel signs now, so we just scrap those. They will replace the aluminum ones, um, and it ends up saving you about ten to fifteen dollars per sign to do a replace versus a brand new.
So are you, moving to the thought of, uh, of course, the steel ones are scrap metal and the aluminum ones, you give them a replace then?
So the aluminum ones, we have been replacing the, the standard thirty inch, uh, the thirty by thirty signs, we have been replacing quite a few of those. Uh, with stop signs, I don't know how many I'll replace, I'm replacing the entire fleet in, in two years, maybe we'll need maybe thirty to fifty on, and probably only next year, four hundred.
Right.
Repaced stop signs.
No, if you replace it, they're all new.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll end up replacing all of them over the next two years.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number twenty twenty day fifteen for replacement of signs.
Sorry. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, approved. You have that longer sign, okay, good.
The last item that I have on the agenda is to approve that, excuse me, to approve an application to work in the county's driveway to Luffton Sons in section nine of Avery Township. Uh, this is part of the clean out of, uh, I'm not sure what, eighty-eight?
Eighty-four, I think. Eighty-four, eighty-eight, whatever, but it's really also in conjunction with that.
With, with the Agwell closure, the project that they did here this spring, um, and this is basically a continuation of all that, so it's a little positive piece of the river.
They included the cost of that into the cost share and the expense with the Agwell closure, so the county didn't get stuck doing that and it was just simple, so, and then...
If anyone wants to know... Did they dig through the road and put a new pipe in, or did they just, they did?
Was that this spring?
That was, early spring.
Early spring.
It was the spring.
Okay.
Uh, and I don't even remember what size of a western four inch.
What was it, a tile or a culvert? So it went under tile.
Tile.
Because then it used to dump on the other side of the road with all these...
This was just an ag drainage well closure, uh, that was to the north of the bridge, and they came down with a, a new private tile.
And cross the road and dump.
And crossed the road and dumped next to...
Okay, into this ditch that they're gonna clean up.
And do a couple of other private tiles.
Okay.
And areas.
They, there is an existing, whichever number district it is, eighty-four, eighty-eight, right to the east of where they did the project, that has always been dumping into the same drainage area, so, as they're finalizing the private ag drainage well, they're gonna make sure there's an agreement with the landowners, part of their agreement with the drainage district, so what they're cleaning out now gets cleaned out in the future, there'll be costs shared between the district and their little...
And their landlords, yeah.
Yeah, they, they developed a little group, like three or four landowners involved in that project.
Okay, good.
And that's, uh, they've got, you know, attorneys that, that put all that together and everything, so it's gonna work out good for...
This is sort of east of Bradkey?
This is east of Bradkey on that diagonal road kinda by Adam Luthell's place.
Okay.
Uh, there's a trestle bridge that runs, uh, that's on the trail, that the water actually runs through the trail.
Runs under, yeah.
Yeah, that's where it ends up.
I thought that's where it was at.
But with this clean out, basically the water's gonna run to the trestle until it gets deep enough there before it makes it to the river.
Mm-hmm.
They had something to do with issues with Beaver damming up the, the private creeks, they're not gonna jump on the other side of the trail and dig and...
Yeah.
Basically going where it always has, you know?
Right.
But the kind of, one of the old ones, they're gonna clean that out.
Gotcha.
I make a motion to approve the working right away permit for Luffton Sons in section ninety-nine.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, approved. Now, that's your list, did you have anything to add to it?
That is my list, uh, you have our breakdown that you, with Casey Nielsen, or is that which type of...
Which type?
Well, I have a bill that we... There's, well, there's a, there's a bill in our case, Nielsen, we had, uh, the Hardy tractor was derating, so they had to go in and, uh, I, I read through it, I can't remember right now, but they had to replace a piece that was basically causing the machine to derate, um, as before.
Eric, tell me this one too, so that we have a...
The part wasn't so bad.
The, the part's never that bad, it's usually the labor that's involved with any of this stuff, but yeah, that was Hardy's tractor, uh, and then they had to replace a piece on the steering column that was broken.
Uh, you have, you have, so there's, there's three, three different lab, or, uh, material and then labor charge and let the road grow.
Yep, so that motor tractor's there, uh, Case has our, uh, Case tractor back up there right now for, uh, a wheel seal that won't stop leaking. Jordan up at Jack's supposedly has our tires for our rubber tire, Natachi, so we can get that moving. Um, we're about done the edge running up in the boat area, so Hardy's gonna start building the fence. Uh, there's a little bunch of work orders and that boat, Case, done, and these guys, uh, I do have a reconstruction meeting with PCI this week, so I can find out when they're gonna come in and do, uh, two box cover projects. Um, and they're gonna find us meetings.
Is your gonna go to?
It's just by zoom, so I haven't really conducted anything in-house.
Uh, probably won't.
For a while, I don't know.
You're gonna get that whole fixed on the intersection of both when they're...
Intersection north.
You look at it.
Oh, yeah, that's just, uh, they should just fill that in when they're doing the edge running. I mean, all that is from semis turning wide, it's not that deep, but...
You did look at that last week, okay. They should, if they hadn't been there, but we did.
They have, yeah, and I've made a work order up.
Okay, yep. Good.
So in your reference last week, you talked about up here, you ran a post the position for other shops, are, are we involved, are you doing that?
So, it's posted, it's posted in, in the other shops right now with Jeff retiring, uh, for them to transfer, if anybody wants to transfer, that's open till the end of the day to day, um, more than likely, nobody's going to apply, because everybody is basically close to home where they're working now, uh, so in that event, we'll have two openings in the Humboldt shop, and we've got applications open till the end of this week, uh, depending on how many applicants and the quality of the applicants, might just pull two.
Pull two from that group, rather than go through it again.
Rather than go through the whole process again.
A good idea, if you got good applicants.
And I, I haven't, I, I've taken two that guys have brought in and just put them in Sue's folder, I haven't put three of the listed applicants. Hope to get a few.
I tell you, I looked at the reminder and it looks like it used to help one of that. Goodness, everybody's looking for...
Everybody's looking for employees, yeah.
Man, oh man.
Nice to have, but you have to buy the same token, and when you shift from one job to the next and there...
Yeah, be more able to hire people who are working.
Yeah, I do.
That's many of us worried about this COVID that they don't know.
Yeah.
Unless they're getting, yeah, they're making more money, whatever.
Not working.
Yeah, as soon as that goes away, they might go back to...
Yeah, that's in, what, November?
Did they extend it?
They were working on it, I know they're not working on it. Haven't seen anything where they got a pass.
Yeah, they haven't agreed on it yet. Yeah.
I work when you don't have to.
Well, this could be a little better deal, even secondary load.
This is, this is a better deal long-term.
Well, yeah, this is, uh, you, you can't, you gotta look at, this is a pretty good job and...
Absolutely.
Yeah, you can't, this COVID thing's not gonna last forever and your free money's not gonna last forever, so, and, but hopefully there's somebody that are applying or not the people that are sitting around trying to get more unemployment.
No, I mean, just the fact that they came in and applied, they're ambitious enough that...
Absolutely, yep.
So do we, do we keep the ones that applied in past, I mean, when, how, I can't remember how long Brandon's been here.
Uh... Two years.
Year and a half, year and a half.
Started in January, year and a half ago.
So I can't remember how many we had then, I guess I didn't know how long you kept those.
We've got them indefinitely, so all of the applicants that applied to that position, we put those in a vanilla envelope, as well as whoever we ended up hiring, we write on the front and the date that they were hired.
Are you going to re-advertise after this week, Ben?
I hope not.
No.
I hope not.
He's hoping he can get another, he can pull two out.
That I got, that I got.
He's hoping he can pull two out of what he has, oh, for the previous...
The only reason that I would have to, to resubmit, the reason that I would have to resubmit would be if somebody were to transfer into Humboldt shop, now all of a sudden...
It's a different job.
Maybe I've got a position in Hardy.
Maybe you'll advertise for the Hardy shop.
So then I gotta, I gotta post it in both shops and see if anybody wants to transfer to Hardy for a week, and then I gotta go through the whole advertising process again.
But if no one internally goes, moves, then you're gonna just carry on with what you have.
Right.
Okay. Anything else for Ben?
No.
Thanks.
Alright.
Thank you.
I guess you're spiffing up in your old age.
Well, well, we have a few minutes, how about we drop down for approve, approval of claims? Everyone had a chance to look at them? We have one question answered?
I got a hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred, money, two dollars and forty cents, twenty, and drainage of twenty-three thousand one hundred and forty-one fifty.
That's what I got too, so I'll second it.
First and second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, claims approved. And in the essence of time, if we can get through committee reports in ten minutes, we have a call with Michael. Is that paired?
Yep.
Okay. I can't, I can't get a book there. The only thing I had was the LEC meeting last week, and then I did go out and speak with Brandon Myers out here on DD four fifty-nine, I think it is. He, he's probably even done now, because at that point, he had about a half mile left, so it was looking real good. I think he said he only found about two pipes that needed to be repaired.
Not bad then.
And that's...
Will he repair those?
I, I think he was going to, I didn't ask him that.
Ask him.
Ask him.
I just thought that...
Because he, he taught the landowners about it.
Okay.
So, but, uh, it's a good project to get done, he works really quick.
I had none.
I had none.
I don't think I got any either. Look real quick here. I didn't figure it was... Nope, I had nothing official.
Well, officially, I had the LEC meeting this past Monday morning, and I guess officially also, being on the weed commissioner, there's been some ongoing discussion, uh, this, and it's still ongoing at this point, but we have one field that I'm aware brought to my attention, that's organic farming.
Yeah, how does that work? With organic... Do they get, like, exempted? Because the weeds and those are horrific.
That's the issue, and it is...
Man, I'm a gentleman as a neighbor.
It is awful. So, of course, this would be the neighboring farmer contacting me, meeting him out at his field, which is spotless, as are pretty much the surrounding fields, the organic field is not. It looks awful. The thing is, weed code not, not to dwell on it, but the weeds that are in fields, water hemp, giant ragweed...
Yeah, noxious.
Felty, they are not on the noxious weed list, they're very obnoxious. If there was a, a field of thistles that, or pomer amaranth, that's on the noxious weed list, I, I would, it would be taken care of, because that's, there's code upon code upon code, like everything else. So, there's a huge problem in Cassuth County, so I've been in touch with their...
You drive by some of those fields, you don't, you can't even tell, it looks like CRP acres, but they're soybeans.
Yeah.
You can't, right?
I know, I can, sure can buy them.
So that's on...
But when we were going, I saw a lot of it.
When you go up that way, you see a lot of it.
I, I was a little surprised, I didn't know, okay, so that makes sense why there were so many dirty fields.
That's organic. So, in contact with the weed commissioner from Cassuth County, so he and I, been in contact with the state weed commissioner, weed commissioner Cassuth County's following some information that they sent a check on, uh, got a call from one of the Cassuth County supervisors, so it's kind of an ongoing thing, but it's a very gray area, that's, that's give you the quick description, if it, it's not, they're not noxious weeds, and it is organic.
Mm-hmm.
And so, don't have an exact resolution, but I guarantee, as you've said, the neighboring farmers who are not organic and like weed-free fields are not happy. So, to my knowledge, we only have one in Humboldt County that, that's a concern, and they have many in Cassuth County.
Yeah.
So, then working through that, that's still a work in progress, and I'll let you know what comes of it.
Well, just so you know, if you go up to, you know, up to Odyssey and, and a load of their grain comes in that's organic, the fiesta they have to go through, I mean, they probe that truck, then he has to pull off to the side while they test that corn or beans, and it has to be, it goes through the test, and if it, whatever they put in it, and then it sits there for a while and make sure that it has nothing that comes up before they'll unload it, because then that's loaded on a special rail car that goes wherever they sold that.
Yep.
It is...
It's complicated.
I mean, it's unbelievable, and you have to wash the truck and, and they haul that stuff in and they ship it, but they're one of the elevators in the area that do it.
Take it.
So, that's the reason, and I'm sure it does make the neighboring farmers...
So, issues like this that are very discouraging to normal farming practices, so, that's an ongoing one on the weed side of things, and I'll keep you up to speed on it.
People love to turn organic unless you're farming next to it.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll say that, yeah, there's other things that go with that, it's just a strange deal, but, so that's, that's kind of the thing on the weed, on the weed front, so, but yeah, that was my official meeting and my other things I'm kind of working on, so, so I had, um...
Peggy, uh... Ready?
You?
Yeah, you bet, yeah.
Um, I was approached by the custodians about, uh, doing the, starting of the parking lot some weekend, I told them I would ask you if you had any issues with that, because that would be overtime for them. Um, Dave, well, we did this for us in the past, and weekends are usually good times because all the cars are out of the parking lot, you don't have to say to people, can you park here, and then can you park there, you've got the whole parking lot free, so...
Block, block the driveways.
Oh, yeah, so they don't want to go through...
About every weekend, there's somebody out here practicing driving.
Oh, okay.
Motorcycle and...
Okay, thank you. We're talking about that.
Put a flag on wet paint so they can go touch it?
Yeah.
Yeah?
For driving.
I come by enough in the weekend, and there's usually somebody in the parking lot.
Oh.
Here, a guy yelling at his kid, back up there, and back up there, he's outside, and they're, they're trying to park and do this and that, but it's interesting, but...
Yeah, do they, do they rent a machine for that, or...
No, we own one, and Dave ordered the paint before he left, and the guy gave a guess shortly before he left.
Well, miles a user. Doesn't, make, I think it would go much quicker when they could just go out there and do it.
Yeah.
Start to dodge vehicles and have people run through your wet paint, like Rick said.
Exactly.
I, does anybody have a problem with that?
Maybe we could borrow some air case?
Well, I was just gonna ask, when do you guys wanna do it?
I don't know, I just told the guys I would ask these guys first if it's okay, and then I'll let them plan when, anyway.
Because we just, uh, we fitted an old broom that'll now fit on the front of our unloaders.
Oh, to, to sweep it maybe before?
Broom, off hours.
That would be nice.
Downstairs.
Yeah, he's around.
That's a good idea. So let me talk to him first, let him know it's okay, and then he'll get a time scheduled and we'll let you know and...
Have you ever done that before?
What's that?
With your broom thing?
Oh, we just got it, uh, fitted, I think, this spring.
Oh, good, so, that'd be nice.
Well, that'd be, make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll tell him.
Great.
That's all I got.
I got a couple things. One, I have to ask Peggy, I'm sure everybody received this, and I've received it a couple different times, um, and it's, uh, from ISAC and it's County Cares Act funding. Um, this was this past week, on Thursday, Governor announced a hundred twenty-five million from the Cares Act will be distributed to Iowa counties and cities. Do you have any intel on that whatsoever?
I was in on an ISAC board meeting when we were first discussing this, and you are supposed to access your FEMA step first, and then the Iowa cares would kick in. As far as the courthouse goes, our costs are negligible, Ben may have some bigger things that he needs to turn in, but...
I, I figured your, your biggest cost would be, uh, rotating the employees up here, you'd be able to claim that, that's gonna be your, your biggest claim.
Yeah, because a little bit of supplies that we purchased is not, and I've talked to some other counties, um, our size, and they say the paperwork and what you get back from it is not worth it, so I'd have to investigate our costs further to see where we would be on that. Uh, larger counties would come out good on it, but...
Yeah, and it does state, they kind of gave you the run, quick rundown on it, FEMA Public Assistance Funding must be sought first to cover some of the eligible COVID-19 related expenses, and then counties should apply to the state. So, long story short, it's more of a paperwork headache than what you're ever gonna get out, and if you have to apply with FEMA first, talk about a paperwork headache, so...
Right.
Probably not something we're missing out on then, because it would be so negligible.
And if you want me to check into the payroll costs, because like I said, the supplies I bought for hand sanitizers and masks and things like that are not that huge, I mean, they're maybe a couple thousand dollars at the most.
What do everybody think on that? I just don't want to...
Did you get that reimbursed from FEMA, correct? No?
No, probably haven't met the threshold.
Oh.
Obviously FEMA is so many dollars per head, so with county, I wanna say you gotta reach like thirty-five thousand before FEMA would...
Oh, wow.
And they're making you go through FEMA first before any of this would kick in, so, I just wanted to see...
And we only did the, the time off stuff for a couple weeks, um, it wasn't that long.
We've got nothing for secondary relief, because we...[1761.62] We've got nothing for secondary relief because we-
Yeah.
We weren't really missed it.
Yeah. Just didn't want to miss anything, it doesn't sound like we are.
Okay.
So I'm gonna file that.
Okay.
Uh, everybody has, well, unless we can get ahold of Michael, I don't wanna miss, means that's scheduled at nine.
Okay, yep. Hold number for him here.
Wait. Good. I, I invited Dan to come up and listen, being on LEC.
Dan, oh, there's Dan.
And my buddy Travis, he's out of town today, so I think Travis, he spoke to the ARB president, CPA Davidson, and then I think he said he had a conversation with Peggy at the end of last week and everything. So as far as bonding for us, we already, uh, we have that agreement, 2018 agreement with, with the board for the unified law enforcement levy. So that would be in place for, for us to possibly use a funding resource for this additional funding for that. Because I know you were inquiring about how, if you bonded, how that would affect the city or the residents and stuff like that.
Yes, it's Mike there.
And I appreciate that. You know, there's this, I think it's a little bit misunderstanding a little bit when we talk about the stuff-
Okay, um, this is Peggy at Humboldt County. You had a meeting with him at nine o'clock this morning?
And maybe Peggy or even Jana would know, maybe you guys know.
All right, just have him give us a call when he's available.
About 18% of county revenues. I mean, is that someone about, right? So if we use that figure, you know, if I'm, 30% up to about 48, and then the rest of the county would be at 52. So it's not such a big discrepancy from the 70 to the 30 as what on base it looks like. It's actually, you know, maybe closer to, you know, 52, 48, if my figures are accurate and stuff like that. So it's not, not quite, uh, so the, did Travis, sorry, did Travis talk to you about that a little bit? Maybe I was gonna say, you know, the, you know, the 70, 30 ratio of, of the contributions to the LEC. And if you factor in what the city of Humboldt and the, and the property owners are contributing to the county budget, which is 15, 18% annually, I mean, so then the city's contribution would be more like 45, 48% of the contributions to the, is that?
I haven't worked out any percentages. I have no idea if you don't think that that's accurate then.
No, I, I just, I have, I have no idea.
Oh, okay.
He is not a CPA engineer.
I have a tenure in the-
I don't like to throw in under the belt.
Yes, and I have a CBA member, and we just kind of talked about it.
But anyway, so we have a funding source. The only thing we'd have to do would be probably change our levy amount, you know, because we're using the unified law enforcement levy to pay the sheriff's salary as a city, as a, as a police administrator, you know, so, which you, this board, maybe some of you members weren't part of it, but you guys authorized the city to enter into that contract with Dean.
How long ago was that?
Pardon me?
How long ago was that? Do you remember?
You know, I think Dean's been a police administrator for maybe almost eight years.
Because I was gonna say, I kinda think that started about when I started.
That's been, that's been a while.
Thank you.
He needed, he needed your permission in order to enter into an independent contractors agreement with the city, so.
If he wants one or not.
I want this, uh-
Thank you. And the reason you guys are exploring the bonding issue, because you can generate the traditional-
Yeah, it goes on our debt service levy.
Goes on your debt service levy rather than, um, because you had explored some-
Yeah, we, yeah, we got the numbers from the local banks, so we kinda wanted to have a comparison to see what, what's the best option for us.
Can you hear us?
Yes, hey Peggy, how are you?
Good morning, just fine. How are you?
I'm good. I think you guys called at the same time, I just another number, so you got my assistance and, uh, I got them. I think we both got unlucky there. How's that?
That's okay.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Peggy, you must have got your sign, you shut the door.
All right, I'm here with the board members. I've given them the information that you handed to me.
Great, great. And Peggy, unless you've got different direction, I'm more than happy to walk through it. I'm not gonna read the board's points, which is kind of giving overview, if that's useful to start with, and then maybe questions unless you saw a different avenue for today's discussion.
Yeah, that's fine.
That'd be great, Mike. This is Eric Underberg. No, just please run through and give us a basically brief overview of everything.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Well, thanks, thank you folks for making some time for me. Um, you know, something that Peggy and I had discussed in the past, and I know she brought up, was the emergency 911 equipment lease for Motorola. And, you know, the, the terms on that for the equipment were pretty favorable, and by that I mean, there was a two-year interest-free period, all things kind of got set up, and it was a relatively short repayment, it was at a relatively attractive interest rate. Um, we saw some of the bigger counties that accessed the bond market more frequently, maybe would go borrow on their own, but a lot of folks took advantage of that, that lease. Um, that being said, interest rates have been pretty low. Uh, we really saw some low rates going into early March before some of the uncertainty created in the financial markets due to COVID-19. Uh, as you're likely aware, starting in about mid-May, rates really started dropping pretty, pretty rapidly and pretty considerably. Um, we'll talk a little bit about that more, but that trend continued even since the information that I sent, down about another tenth of a percentage point in interest rates over the last two weeks, um, which is just, you know, really creating some unique circumstances. So in addition to looking at, well, is there a better interest rate out there than what we're currently paying on the equipment lease with Motorola, we also have a couple notes outstanding from 2015 related to law enforcement center. Uh, 2015 A notes, the most sizable, just over $600,000. The 2015 B notes, relatively small, $90,000. Uh, just for reference, there were three series that we had completed back in 2015, so third of which was done as an interim note so we could take advantage of a revolving loan fund, uh, program through Humboldt. So, um, that's, that's a, that's the only other debt obligation not being analyzed here because there's no, there's no real juice to squeeze on that one. So these are the three items we looked at potentially refinancing, and if you do them concurrently, we thought that might, you know, give us some economies of scale, and that's really what we were taking, taking a look at. And we'll talk a little bit about what those results would look like as of today. Um, you know, something that I wanted to point out on, on kind of page three of the information I provided, you know, the, the county has not accessed municipal bond market previously. We did, all the other loans were either, you know, directly with Motorola or on a direct bank loan basis. And we usually do that, especially for smaller transactions, just because it's usually more efficient. But historically, well, interest rates have, have changed that, and we're doing a number of initial offerings for folks, that the county this summer has taken advantage of that. And with that, I wanted to just give everyone a little bit of context. Municipal bond, bond market does require some disclosures, but it's an offering document called the preliminary official statement. That's something that we help prepare for the county and also work with your bond attorneys, and that's the Dorsey Whitney offer out of Des Moines. Um, that process takes a little bit of legwork, but it's relatively straightforward, and it's something that the professionals are working on pretty regularly. So while that's an administrative hurdle, I wanted to be clear that it's something that we can obviously use to take advantage of bond market, but that bond, that process is probably got a four-week preparation process, um, to get that bill completed, reviewed, and approved by this board. So that's new, but something I wanted to, to point out. The other piece I wanted to point out is most of the time, folks think about municipal bond market and requiring the county to give ratings. Uh, we, we don't see that as a requirement, especially right now, there's just not that much difference. We have communities, cities and counties that we work with currently that do have an outstanding rating, that are not getting a rating this summer just because there's just not a lot of additional benefit to paying for a rating fee to give lower rates. Rates are just that low and everything is very, very compressed. So, um, you know, like I said, there's some new navigation of administrative items that would need to be done, but we think the juice is potentially worth the squeeze if the board feels its merit, and that's kind of the projected savings information that I provided for folks on slide four. Um, the first thing I always want to address is that anytime we talk about savings on a refinancing, it's always net of all costs. So that includes the bond attorney's work, our costs, and then registered paying agencies, that the nominal amount for a third party, thankfully Oklahoma's the kind of low-cost provider right now in the state, to each year, play the payments that you'll be making to bondholders and make sure it gets to the dozens of people that hold your bonds, rather than the potentially one bank holding the bonds. It's really the clearing of those payments. So everything in here accommodates all those costs, so it's real true savings back to the county. Um, the number we provided was just shy of $80,000, and that's always on a present value basis. There's, you know, 6% then of the amount refunded is what would be safe. And as I've mentioned before, for refinancing like this for municipalities like the county, we try to target 3% to 4%. Um, if we're in that level, it's definitely worth living at, potentially worth pursuing. But I want to be clear, you know, if I, on something like this, that's under $2 million, you know, um, it's not just about percentage basis. You know, there's gonna be some work to do over the next month or two, if this is something that the board wants to proceed. With those $80,000 of savings, merit full maturity moving forward with something like this? Now, as I mentioned, rates are a little bit lower than when I prepared this information, but I do think what we're talking about today is a good place to say, hey, if we're comfortable with this level of savings, yeah, it's worth giving the ball rolling. Um, I'll conclude here, but before we put it up with any questions, just to note on kind of that fifth slide, I made the point that to kick things off, we just hold a simple public hearing, so set for published notice in the paper between four and 20 days of holding your hearing. So you do that over the next couple board meetings, if you so choose. You could do that and wouldn't be obligated to continue. You could just do that. If the market's there, great, let's finish the process. If it's not there, you're not out anything. And it will allow you to come back and choose a time when you didn't want to refinance in the future. You wouldn't have to start the ball all over again. So even folks that have kind of what they consider borderline savings, one, just the absolute low level of interest rates, and two, just that, hey, let's at least put ourselves in a position to make the decision in the future, I think that's kind of huge for us. So, um, you know, I'm a little scared of interest rates, I think everyone's aware things are very, very low right now. Um, we're also not borrowing for an extremely long period of time, just 10 years, we're not changing the term of the debt. Um, that would keep the overall kind of payback 15 years on the law enforcement center as initially planned, and about 12 years on the E911 equipment. So no changes on that, on those items. Uh, this is very vanilla. Uh, this is for, I think from analysis standpoint, we want to keep things very basic, but can obviously tweak that with the needs of the board. So I know that's a fair amount of information. I'd love to pause here, answer any questions that you might have, and then kind of give direction for, for you folks. Um, we can talk about timing, things like that, but appreciate you giving me an audience here today.
Go ahead, Rick.
Well, I was, so what you're looking at is bundling these other three debts together and, and, uh, put it all together and then go in one bond at the-
Correct.
At the current lower rates.
That's correct.
Hey, Michael.
Yep.
So there is an interest rate involved, we keep talking about, we know the interest rates are lower.
Yep.
Approximately, what are we talking about for an interest rate?
Yeah, I think, I think I included a brief number run for you on the, on the information I, I forwarded along email. And again, that's a couple weeks ago, but the, the way we found it, like the version of APR for the municipal bond market would be true interest cost. It's on the eighth page with the slides and the yield curve chart, like the second to last. The top of the header, there's summary of refunding results on it, and in the second tier, there's a line up called true interest cost. That's sort of blended all the interest rates. It was 1.19% was the rate, um, that we were looking at a couple weeks ago. I just ran this morning, just a quick refresh from my desk, based on our early information, and it was 1.12% as of today if we've been pricing the bonds.
Okay, so that's the true interest rate.
Interest cost.
But, and this is all, yeah, a lot of information, but is there other costs that end up being associated past the low interest rate? So in other words, this is a little different than a basic loan that you take out a loan at whatever the interest rate versus the bonding? Are we incurring some additional costs along with that bonding that have to be factored in?
The reason we use that true interest cost is that it incorporates all of those. And those three costs that we've identified would be RBS, your bond attorney, Dorsey Levy, their, their costs, and then the small paying agent costs. So that captures all of that into the true interest cost.
Oh.
So that is a valid rate for you, the 1.12%. The way the municipal bonds are issued is that you have a maturity at each of the 10 years of repayment, 2021 through 2030. Uh, the bonds be issued at a premium, and by that I mean, interest rates would be, are so low, people mount coupon rates in case of raising future rates over the next 10 years. That protects them, that's what all the banks would want. So they'd be issued with a base amount of 2% as the interest rate, but the yields would be much lower, from 0.35 up to 1%. And I know premium bonds, I'm throwing that at you here on a Monday morning, but premium bonds are kind of like going to the, going to the fuel tank, right? So regular bonds are what we think about issuing at par. That's kind of like your home mortgage, or an auto loan, those bank loans that we've done before, right? Where the rate was 3%, that I forget it, that's regular, right? You're, you're, you know upfront what you're getting, that's the return. The bond market, especially with the low rates we've had over the last eight to 10 years, are premium bonds. And the sad is that going to the pond, and I'm not gonna get into fuel standards here because that's not any fun. But the idea is, if you're gonna pay for that premium gas, you're gonna pay that upfront for expected higher return in the future. And in this case, bondholders are gonna give you more than $1 for each dollar of bond. So you issue fewer bonds so that they can have that return of a 2% interest rate. That's where we get all the net rate pieces back to it, but it comes out in the wash there as a pricing mechanic to give them, the bond investors who need to hold these bonds or potentially sell your bonds in the future with no impact to you, flexibility in future rating rate environment.
But that rate's locked for 10 years?
Everything is, yes, on your end, everything is locked. That is, that is the right question, correct. Once you price the bond, so if we moved on kind of the projected kind of concept of a timeline, talking about locking your rates in late September, once those are done, even though you've still got some paperwork and closing to finish up, your rate doesn't move until you've completely paid off the bond, unless you want to prepay them early, all under the board's control.
Mike, could you clarify for me on the sources and uses of funds?
Yes.
We've got refunding of Series 215A, 215B, and 2017.
Yes.
We don't know these by numbers, we know these by LEC building, LEC equipment. Could you tell me what's what as far as your thinking?
Yes, 15A is the, uh, the LEC building.
Okay.
15B is the balance, the LEC work that's not related to the Humboldt loan. And Series 2017 is the Motorola lease.
Okay.
Now, the numbers on the 15A and 15B are good numbers. There's, you know, we know, we worked on those, so we know for sure. The 17 is the Motorola lease, and with them, I know you've got a set schedule, but I think we also just wanna work to confirm with them if this is something you want to proceed with. Hey, make sure we've got the right payoff amount, down to the penny. Um, we've seen on those type of equipment leases, they might use a different calculation for the interest, but just wanna make sure on the same page. We're usually talking about a few dollars, maybe a couple cents, but we just wanna make sure that's good for it, and that's something we'd work with them and your bond attorneys to make sure it's all correct for issuing the tax exempt bonds before we're done.
Okay.
Yes, what did you ask him? So the timeline of the issuance of this-
Dan, just go ahead and answer.
Yeah, it's-
Dan Sol is here, he's on the LEC board, he has a question for you.
Okay, Mike, so the issuance of these bonds, we have a November payment due of $188,000 to Motorola, so if- So, if, if the board of supervisors here this morning votes approval and moves forward, if that's the case, then will we be able to meet that timeline with our payment due on, in November, Mike?
So, probably, but, and here's the deal. I, I, I can do anything that the board wants me to do. My personal, this is, this is how I do things initially, to keep everything vanilla and conservative, and have you issue the fewest amount of bonds as possible, which is, if you're that close to a payment date, so in this case, November of twenty-twenty, I'm not including that in the analysis. Um, could you include it in the analysis? Yes, absolutely. And you can manipulate the payments and the timing of the payments however you want to. I think we could close by November one. I think it's likely you'd close in early October here, so that's not a problem. That being said, if not included in here, I think that payment's in the, 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 the principal amount you redeem on that date, not the total payment, or the annual payment's the same each year. It's about seventy-seven thousand dollars of principal. If we wanted to include it, it would increase the amount of this borrowing. It may also increase the savings on a dollar amount a little bit, but the whole idea is you've likely got money set aside to make that November payment anyway. So, is there a benefit to kicking that down, you know, nine months or a year, or whatever the board sees fit? I think that's the question.
So, Mike, your twenty-seventeen emergency nine-one-one estimate there, that's six hundred and eighteen eighty, that doesn't include the payment from two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty, correct, Mike? So, that would be-
That's, that's correct, sir, yes.
Okay, so that would be another hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So, then we'd look, the, the board would be looking at financing about seven ninety then versus six eighteen, correct?
Yeah, I, I-
About ballparked here?
I think that, that nineteen payment kind of been made though, correct?
No.
Has not, Mike.
No.
Has not.
Oh.
But, yeah, they, they pushed it back because we weren't operational.
So, that's the, that's the piece of information I wasn't sure on. Um, we could absolutely include that, um, in an updated analysis. The only thing that would change from my perspective right now is when we need to start that public hearing process, which we could do as soon as your next board meeting, we want to just to make sure we include-
Everything.
There's two, two requirements on that document that your attorney put together. Um, one is what we're actually trying to do. So, this would be refinancing the fifteen A and fifteen B series and the twenty seventeen lease. We also would need a second piece, which is a not to exceed amount on the refinancing. And that number is only constrained politically, right? You, you don't, doesn't obligate you to borrow even one dollar. It's just a high-end threshold. Now, we try to keep it reasonable, right? Um, but at the same time, we want to make sure we incorporate things like that. So, we did need to include an extra hundred and eighty thousand dollars in there because we have the ability to do so. Um, we put that in there and we can continue to have that discussion on the best way to attack that. Does, does that make sense?
Yeah, pretty much. Okay. Does anybody got any more questions for Dave or for Mike? Well- When was the, when was the actual rate on the bond lock in, Mike? He's kind of losing-
So, that, that was my, that was my last question for you folks here today, which, could you walk me through a little bit of what your board meeting schedule is? And I can pencil this out for you over the phone, and then I can try to follow up to that timeline for, for Peggy, the board, on you folks here today.
Well, our schedule is every Monday morning.
Okay, okay. Um, what about the, the Labor Day week?
Possibly we'll not meet. Or we can't. Well, I said seven. Is that a claims week?
So, here's, the, the week of Labor Day, really the, the week of, from, from Wednesday the second to Wednesday the ninth, the market's basically closed down. So, there's no real reason for us to super rush there. What I would suggest to you folks, and we need to give enough time for the attorneys to work on this as well, is if you want to kick the ball off next Monday on the seventeenth to set the public hearing, that is a pretty low, um, administrative burden for the attorneys. No problem to get that done. I suggest then holding your hearing on the thirty-first of August. And then we would approve the preliminary official statement, that's the offering document for the bonds, on the fourteenth, so the Monday, a week after Labor Day. Once that's done, we could set rates at any subsequent meeting date. So, I think you could do that as soon as the twenty-first of September. That would be the day you could lock rates. So, um, you know, that's, that's about six weeks from today, um, and that's a pretty modest and reasonable pace. Um, go any faster than that, I'm not sure we achieve a whole lot. Um, realistically, you're pushing folks to get work done two weeks sooner, and you're only going to be able to price the bonds a week sooner. Um, you know, I think that's a pretty modest, uh, way to get things done, and then you close the first week of October, but your rate would be locked September twenty-first.
Okay. So, we could, as you had mentioned before, this could be in place, I'll say, for lack of a better term, the first part of October then, he said, a closing?
Yeah, yes, sir, yes.
That's not a bad timeframe.
That's not bad at all.
So, is this all we have that we're looking to put on this? We don't have anything else that we're needing to make payment on? That we can lump into this, or?
Or just some other projects?
That's what I wondered.
I know.
We don't have any more projects.
No.
No, I'm just-
I think it is, man.
At one point one percent?
Yeah.
That's a very fair question. You're going to go one point three, whatever that number is.
The only thing out there is that, uh, nine-one-one software.
They're rebuilding over here.
No, we're not.
So?
That's a very fair question, Bruce. I don't know, I don't know, this is basically refa-financing the two LEC bonds a lot. And this is-
Great sense to consolidate all of your things.
Yeah, it does. This all makes sense, but, you know, are we looking to spend more money? Not really, no.
I'm not looking to spend more money. I'm looking to-
Is there something else?
Whether it's in November that we're going to have to pay, do we, why wouldn't we pull that into a, into this if we need it? That's my question.
Yeah, but also ask his criteria. You can't just spend that money on anything.
I understand. Just don't want to do one point three million, and then when we get this done in October, look at each other and say, well, we should have done the seventy-eight thousand that we have to pay to whoever.
Like you say, there's only one thing out there I can think of, and that's that fifty thousand dollars software cost.
To the LEC.
To the LEC.
Then LEC is costing-
It's a tremendous expense for accounting.
It is. There's tremendous, well, there you go.
Maybe we should just do like Minneapolis and defund the law.
No, don't.
I'm just joking, I'm just joking.
Do you have more questions?
Well, Mike, I think that- Do you have one thing to add for Bruce's comment? Uh, and you're talking about the new nine-one-one software that's part of the, that kind of-
Unfortunately, I got full moves.
Yeah, so, yes, there could be an addition of some money there to, so we could probably get the figures to you. Like you said, what is the exact numbers we're looking at? I think that's-
But not to exceed numbers.
Yeah, what's the, what's the not to exceed?
Not to exceed, is that kind of-
What is that?
Yes, sir, yes. Can I, can I suggest something?
Yeah, please do.
I, I'm, I'm all about, and, and people that I, I work with regularly know that I'm a pretty efficient person, and I'm always saying, things change fast. In, in, in this case, I think the timeline, because of the holidays, isn't going to change materially one way or the other. Can we plan to stay working slower? But would you consider just having a, a, I'll send a, I'll work with the attorneys, I'll work with Peggy over the next week, and rather than having your action to set the meeting on the seventeenth, could we bump that to the twenty-fourth? It won't change the final timeline, but then on the meeting on the seventeenth, we can just have a project list, we're refinancing these, we're doing this for software, and here's who we want to use for the not to exceed amount. It could be a very brief conversation a week from today, but that way we're all set, and then move forward with actions starting on the twenty-fourth. Won't change the final timeline, but gives you both a chance to kind of marinate on it for a week.
Yes.
Acceptable?
Yes, yeah, yes.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay.
To clear everything up by next week.
I, I'd just rather do that than, than, like you said, you come back in a few weeks and, oh, we should have grabbed X, Y, Z. That way we're not, there's no reason to put pressure on anybody involved in this whole thing. So, yeah, I'll make, I'll, I'll, I'll get working on that, but that is a side-by-side. I'll send kind of a preliminary piece on that and a timeline to Peggy. You and Peggy, we can, we can look at those in the next couple of days, and then start working with Dorsey and we'll get the ball rolling. How's that?
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's fair.
Yep.
Deal, deal.
I think that, so, we'll work on that. We'll plan a visit with you next week, and then we'll just move forward as, as planned.
Excellent, excellent. Well, I appreciate everybody making time for you this week. You guys have a lot of good on right now.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, yeah.
All right, thanks, bud.
Goodbye. Good point, Bruce. Um, I doubt any of us have seen, we are in a current lease.
Yeah.
There is ninety-plus thousand dollar payment that was not paid a year ago. They just said, no, the project's not done, you don't need to make the payment in two thousand nineteen. Obviously, they did not forgive that payment, and they will not restructure the lease to add it to the end of the payment. So, they haven't been hounding us, the county, the LEC, for that yet, but they may.
Oh, that's due November first, right?
Technically, the ninety thousand dollars was due last November.
Last November.
So, that may be contingent to pay off the lease, that that payment needs to be made prior to November first, because that is a lease agreement.
That was supposed to have been up and running six months after we got hit by lightning.
Right.
And that's been two years.
I don't, I pleaded everything, but they said this lease is structured, we get into financial stuff like this, and it's structured through the bank and all that, and they're not bending on it. So, what I'm saying is, we may have, we, one way, shape, or form, we'll have to pay a ninety thousand dollar payment before the lease is legitimate to pay off.
To pay off, gotcha.
So, however we can incorporate that, it's, I'm not sure, because I'm not in any of these things, but it might be possible to still, if this goes as quickly as what he's saying on the bonding side, that that money is there from the bonding. But it's a lot of technicality, the ninety thousand dollar payment needs to be made before they'll allow you to pay off the lease. Not saying that there's a way to make that work with the Motorola company, but-
Well, yeah.
Was that ninety thousand included in this?
Not really.
It was not originally-
Not in that six twenty, six eighteen, no.
Neither, neither the nineteen or the twenty, twenty paid.
We didn't-
From what I understand, correct?
We didn't feel comfortable making the ninety thousand dollar payment when they hadn't held up.
I just didn't know if it was included in the, in the, that's all I wanted to know that. No, I get that, you don't want to pay something when it's not working.
Yeah, but on the surface, it seems like a great option for the board, though, I mean, because Motorola's was what, four point four percent?
Three point four percent.
Yeah, three point four percent. And the local lenders, they, they can't match what the general bond obligation could do. So, I mean, it just, it seems, seems reasonable for, you know, for you guys to pursue that. And like Rick, like Eric said, uh, Bruce had a great question, but I'll ask you guys to ask some other, I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not, but if you had some outstanding, other outstanding tests after?
I believe being this is, I mean, it's basically all LEC stuff. Uh, I would probably recommend including the updated nine-one-one. That is the software stuff.
I would agree with that.
And then past that, then I think we're covered, but we need to get the numbers on, uh, total radio system dollars, which is quite a bit more than this.
And whenever we're supposed to be completely up and running.
He's up and running now.
Yes, now.
He's been running for a couple of months, and this, they seem to think it's working great.
Yep.
Fifty thousand that they're talking about there, that's, that's something I'd take to reach to talk to a lot. Yeah, yeah. And, you know, as I, you could say it was an oversight on the LEC board, we did not include that in our budget planning, so we're, you know, our five hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget that we have, you know, that there would be ten percent of our budget right there that we did not account for, you know, just some lack of, some, that lack of communication there, you know, and things. So, two weeks' time, we would include that, you know, as long as we stay within that minimum bond, bonding amount.
I guess I have a, you have comments? If you would, I just, can you get, uh, further conversation, the, as close as possible numbers to get for our discussion next week with the nine-one-one equipment? The really total amount due to Motorola, because we would have to, one way, shape, or form, that's going to be the amount to get to the number that they're looking for?
Eric, this initial payment that you're, you know, referring to is ninety thousand. They, they've made that clear that we owe that before we can pay off the entire Motorola. They have?
Yes.
Okay.
Now-
I mean, you can do it the same day. You can write one check and then-
Can they be flexible, you know? Can they hold? But they made it specifically clear that this lease was in place. Yes, they did not get the system up and running due to many malfunctions along the way. But, they just basically said, we're not going to hold you to this payment in two thousand nineteen, but we're definitely going to hold you to the lease when it's up and running. So, yeah, there is, but there's still that total dollar amount, however you want to slice it, that is not here, and then I don't know what the exact dollar amount is on the additional, uh, updated equipment.
Software, yeah, I, I, I remember, it was about fifty thousand.
I remember, that's, that's a number-
On our portion of it, the LEC portion, I think so too. I mean, we can kind of next reach to get a breakdown of what it's for, but-
I guess it's just, um, in the very, as close as possible, exact number. That's what the bond, Michael, would like to have, to not exceed, you know, to not exceed a month.
Okay, whatever sounds great. And I mean, I thought maybe we have to come up with it like, you know, first of September, you know, and how would we finance ninety thousand dollars first of September? Finally, we could possibly, I mean-
Well, you just have a Realtor slash mayor who's took that check.
I front you guys some money and then I get really frustrated.
There you go. Every time you call Peggy, she'll say, Dan, the check is in the mail.
Yeah. You're a lot of exercise, man. We pay one, we give them one check, the pay off is over after that.
Week then.
My question is, is-
Yeah, you told me what you want me to try to find.
Oh, oh, my God.
We're going to be, we're going to be-
Bruce, you're kidding. I mean, I'm not sure where to look for some of this, but I'll, I'll work on it.
I can, yeah, that's curious part. I already have the data, but he's our tire manager, he's my best con- You know, our old radio company was in thirty years old. Only thing is, we got the financial.
It's supposed to be fifteen-year life, we might-
For better to ask the question.
So, did we ever get the fire or-
You know, how could that handle? But I mean, pretty much, I could get the exact amount that we owe. Exact, I mean, I think all the communities got one. But, for that, for that much, we've got to find out how convenient they would be on that ninety thousand dollar.
Maybe include some of that.
If this bonding thing goes through, and they're talking towards part of October, and they say, okay, we'll work with you, the show, you win the ninety thousand dollar payment, and then you pay off.
Can't communicate on this new seven hundred.
It would be a very simplistic, they've got, I'm not a young PA, I'm not in the bonding industry. And from there, they have to find that, transfer the lease, ask for the old system.
So, that might be a problem.
We went through that.
Yep, do one radio for first, last day, you're out of power.
Or if I don't have any issues, I don't know. Unless I find something out, you will get an email.
Okay.
Probably from now, probably from the others. To find out on Motorola, what their flexibility is on used junk going off. Sounds like this bonding thing could go anywhere.
Yeah, it does. It sounds like a fairly smooth.
I don't know.
The thing is-
I have multiple conversations.
Okay, I'm done.
Just a second, stand me there.
What, what's your question?
He kept asking about, or he kept talking about the true interest cost, but there is also the net interest cost. Did you mention that and I missed it? Because the true interest cost-
Because the true interest cost is 1.19 and then the net interest cost is 1.16.
I think that's when they throw in their, their cost, their cost of, I don't know if you look under, where is it? It bumps it up from the net to the true.
It includes their cost.
I'm trying to look where I seen that.
It's on page two, the summary of funding results, refunding results.
Yeah, sources and uses of funds.
Yeah, summary of refund, no, summary of refunding results, my bad.
For some reason...
Remember, he said that that's where the interest cost was?
From the back pages.
I think, Rick, that's correct. I mean, the true interest is factoring in a little bump up because of the administrative fees.
Okay. And net is what, and then their cost?
Then their costs are thrown in there and that bumps it up to that. And your net is showing 1.19 as a...
Right.
Yeah.
That would be correct.
And that fluctuates until we get it settled.
It can.
Right.
But a topic like that would be...
The 21st, September 20, it says rate is locked in at 9:21, after we go through the whole process. And then after that, it won't change once we get it locked in, even if we don't have our money till after, whatever.
True interest is 1.193, net interest is 1.168. And that was 10, 11 of the line. It's good for their, the way I read that.
Or origination costs and things like that.
All righty then. I'll get the information from the, just the radio system as much as I can gather and make sure that gets to you one way or another.
I'm wondering about the LEC's involvement in this. Do we need to have an LEC board meeting? I mean, we've got three members here, but John is not here. Do we need to have another meeting to get the approval to go forward on this? Because you have like three or four proposals of different things to do.
Yes, we did have, I mean, I know we...
Well, they should.
Or, you know, local banks or keep it as is or...
The LEC board can actually say this is a financing direction that they want to go.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering if you should have. Your last board meeting, you said you would meet again to describe...
Sure, do it electronic, would they?
Sure.
Could we...
Are you doing evening or late afternoon or, you know, instead of...
Well, once we get John there, you're looking at the LEC board.
Yeah, 24 hours. No, I, true, I mean, I know, because he's gone.
Could you ask him? Can you tell him what's going on, so he's up to speed?
I think, I think he's aware of what's going on.
Because other than John Slater, we were looking at the LEC board. So I think that's fair, though, that should be official through the LEC board. Could it, would it be fair to have this, our further follow-up with the bonding company with Michael next week? Would that be all right? Could you go that route to see, yes, this is, yeah, another option and then get the official direction from the LEC board? Or do we need to do it prior next week?
I guess you do the LEC board thing sometime this week.
Be more comfortable.
So you'd like to do it? Okay, that's just asking.
And we can do it like, we can do it...
I'm fine with that.
Send out a, you know, request for, you know, these are our options of, you know, how you feel about which one you should pursue.
That'd be fine.
That'd be fine. I understand where you're coming from because it's truly the LEC board.
Which starts with them.
I think if you're, I'm comfortable with electronic, if Peggy is, then I'm afraid if we do it personally, then I can get her to get your answer. You get his response electronic.
Yeah, if you'd be more comfortable for me, if we could do just a telephone.
A telephone conference?
Yeah, you could be at home, you could be in your car.
You put the time and date together.
Yeah, like you'd like to have it at home.
I would too, at least.
That's fine.
That's all right. If some of what days are available, what times, it can be in the afternoon, it could be, you know, at night, it could be, you know, whatever you want it to be. It doesn't have to be 7:30 in the morning. But we do have to publish it 24 hours ahead of time.
Oh, okay.
Even a phone conversation.
Yep.
Okay, let's just take a time.
Should we say Wednesday afternoon? Then how's that? I mean, if we get, is that too, does that put you under the gun too much?
No, Wednesday, today, Thursday.
Say Wednesday 1:00?
Wednesday 1:00.
Just on the phone?
Phone on, you have to get...
I have got, I don't know exactly what my timeline on Wednesday is, but I know I'm going to be gone and I want to make sure I'm available. I know it's a phone call and, yeah, well, you take your time, huh?
I...
Me too. The national health is good.
I know you're a busy man, Dan. It would have to be later in the day on Wednesday. It means it's just a phone call, it's going to be a pretty short one, I'm sure.
Or earlier.
Or earlier. Yeah. First thing Wednesday morning, I know it would work.
You say that would work?
Yeah, first thing in the morning. I mean, it doesn't have to be 7:30, but it, you know, 8:30?
8:30?
Yeah.
Say 8:30, Mike.
I won't be gone then, but I will be leaving Wednesday morning and I don't know, I don't have an exact time on my schedule, but first thing Wednesday morning, if you want, just do it. I just, my concern is, I really appreciate the other board member being involved in this because otherwise, you know...
Even if another board, I mean, it would still be three or...
It's official, I know.
Even if John wasn't on board with what we're doing and stuff, I mean...
I just want to have his input. Yeah, me too. If you want to get it sooner or later Wednesday morning, that gives time for publication and everything.
Do you want me to check and see if that works for John before we...
You want me to call in?
Okay.
I'll call in. I'll be down there.
Yes. Now, it works as said word and...
8:30 Wednesday morning on a teleconference.
That got done.
You bet.
Okay.
Thanks, Peggy.
And then will you email us, you know, some options, so we can have a hard copy of that information in front of us so, you know...
Yeah, the things that I gave to the LEC board on Monday, we could all, all email those to all folks.
And then include the information we've got from Bank Iowa and then what we discussed today.
I don't have anything from Bank Iowa.
I will, I will come in after meeting, give that to you.
Did we hear any, did you hear that one?
Yes, we did.
Good.
Okay.
You think great.
Well, one quick thing we have in front of, I have in front of me, have this from the railroad crossing business.
Yeah.
Joint Drain District 3-9, Webster-Homme County. I actually got this earlier this week. You guys have a copy?
Yes.
There's a little map here from the floor and you can read it as well as I can. Basically, it's sort of an ongoing thing to tell you where they're at. Just of it is that it's waiting for review from their legal counsel. So the railroad is talking to them evidently. This Greg Lingam of the engineering department...
Almost a month ago.
Yeah, it's going to the...
This was reset and, which is still waiting for the response from the legal counsel.
Right.
And this is from last week, this little note, and that's where they're at. And Webster County has alerted this as well because it is a joint district.
That it is?
Well, one other thing that Dave and I keep getting from the Coalition Against Bigger Trucks.
We don't got it.
Everybody got that, Dave? What, the only request is that consider adding, which I would say this county's name, a group letter to members of Congress asking they oppose longer and heavier trucks. What is the thought process of, so we quit getting these emails all the time? I, this is going up to the federal, well, I think they make a pretty good point. Our infrastructure is weak as is across the country. I would tell them not to let bigger, heavier trucks.
Didn't we already do a resolution for this last year though?
That was with the law, that was a long, that was a long deal. That was some outfit over in eastern Iowa or Wisconsin.
Don't mind, Chris, that's what it means, I have a little gear on that. Um, we're a bridge, we're legal for every bridge that you go across.
Okay.
So, talk to a farmer that pulls in with two Parker wagons that they're weighing over 120,000 pounds and they can't scale it on a bridge. So every one of the bridges that are crossed is in jeopardy when they pull in with those smaller wagon, or they aren't smaller, 12 to 1500 bushel wagons.
Yes.
They can't scale it.
No.
And they aren't regulated by anybody.
Right.
But I am. Because two weeks ago, I got pulled over by Clarion and they get the tape measure out and make sure that my axles hadn't changed any since the day that I purchased the trailer. But they got out the, oh, well, you're just legal. Well, it isn't just legal, it's the same length it was when I bought it. So I'm legal to go across the bridges, but, and I don't want any farmers pissed that I said that, but they have no regulations and all that stuff, but I don't want my phone to ring off.
Well, that must likely is not right.
Yeah.
This is not...
Supervising Ryan.
Apparently...
I'm just, I'm just saying.
It's bigger than longer than what we currently have.
Yeah.
It's just one of those things that you get passed along the counties, so, but if there's any direction on that, Dave, that's obviously who's asking.
I get passed on if anybody was interested, yeah. I get...
I told you that was...
Bruce was not interested.
I get emails every day on different ones. Contact us on here.
Yeah. Well, past all that fun stuff, is there anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All?